All right, I'm starting the recording. Thanks, everybody for being here. Okay, I think we're good. I have the transcript on. Everyone's here, I'm ready to go. All right. All right, thanks, everybody. This is the June regular meeting of the Disabilities Commission for the City of Santa Monica. This is our last meeting of the fiscal year. One again, thanks, everyone, for being here on time and riding with us through the the technical difficulties. Also want to give a shout out. I know a number of folks, this is their their last regular meeting before their terms are done. Shout out to Commissioner Hill for three terms. Appreciate your service here and bittersweet, this is the last one. And other folks, if this is your last one, hopefully you'll you'll renew or just thanks for your service and the time out of in addition to your family obligations, work obligations, et cetera, to to come in here and helping us out. That being said, let's let's kick off the agenda. The first item is the swearing in of our our new commissioner, Commissioner Kara Handler. Kara Handler, so I'm gonna read an oath of affirmation. You're on your phone, so it's gonna be a little different, but if you could put your right hand up and repeat after me. Can you hear me, Commissioner Handler?
Yes.
So just have your, well, we'll just imagine your your hands up, your your right hand. I'm gonna say something and then you repeat it. This is the oath of affirmation of allegiance for public officers and employees for the State of California and the City of Santa Monica, County of Los Angeles. So we'll get it started right now. I, Kara Handler.
I, Kara Handler.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Disabilities Commission.
The duties of the Disability Commission.
This was subscribed and sworn to me to perform me this June sixth day or the sixth day of June 2022. Thank you so much and and welcome to the commission, Commissioner Handler. And can you just introduce yourself real quick?
Okay, and are there, is there anything an umbrella theme you want or just personal information?
Yeah, just information on you and what your passions are about and why you decided to join the Disabilities Commission.
Passions and why I joined. I would say I, my passions are art and music and I went to Sarah Lawrence College and UC Berkeley. Got my BA at UC Berkeley and I I wanted to join the commission because I thought it would be a good learning experience. And that's really the only reason why I thought it would be a good learning experience. And also just being a lifelong Democrat, I thought I might, you know, make some friends and do fun things with people and go out and have a good time and stuff like that. So that's about it.
Thanks for the introduction and go Bears.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you just said.
Oh, go Bears. I went to Cal as well.
Oh, you didn't? Yeah.
And Noe, I see your hands up. Is there, um, do you have a question before we get moving?
Oh, sorry. No, that was the testing earlier. I guess I just never clicked it. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Commissioner Handler. Look forward to working with you over the next term and thanks for being here and introducing yourself. Next, we have a presentation. It's Agenda Item 1B. Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on Local Efforts Addressing the Regional Homelessness Crisis. Thank you, Brian Hargrave from the City of Santa Monica for coming to present. This has just been a one of the biggest topics in Santa Monica. It's been in city council. So I really wanted folks to come in and talk to us as it affects people with disabilities. High rates of homelessness among that population and just want to know what the city's up to and and get our feedback. So thanks again, Brian. I believe we'll have a presentation and then we'll ask questions and go from there. Do you have a slides or anything, Brian?
I don't have slides. I am gonna give in a bridge version of the comprehensive report that was presented by staff to the city council on May 11. It's a comprehensive report and PowerPoint slides that I believe are available. I know the video is on the city's YouTube channel, but I don't have a visual aid with me tonight.
No problem. So I'll give the floor to you and and thanks for coming.
Awesome. Well, thank you and good evening Chair Elliott and Commissioners. It's my honor and privilege to be with you this evening to provide a brief update on local efforts to address the regional homelessness crisis. As I mentioned, on May 11, 2022, city staff provided a comprehensive and interdepartmental staff report to the council on homelessness regarding the city's coordinated efforts to address this significant crisis. The update on May 11 included a presentation of the 2022 Santa Monica homeless count results, which I'll present tonight. A brief overview on the implementation of the city's four pillar strategy to address homelessness. And discussion of potential opportunities for future city budget investments. The update took the form of a 50-page staff report, which is available on the city's website. And I can make sure that the link to that agenda item, as well as the presentation, discussion, it went over six hours, can be shared with the commission if needed. The update also included considerable discussion of the regional context in which we find ourselves with the focus on the regional affordability, housing affordability crisis, system optimization, we'll get into that a little bit. Behavioral health and recent changes in the regional criminal justice system as it affects people experiencing homelessness and homelessness throughout our community. Report also advised that future decisions on the city's homelessness policies and investments may be further informed by an ongoing comprehensive audit of the local homeless services system that's being conducted by Moss Adams, the city's internal auditor. Report also introduced a citywide interdepartmental homelessness work plan, which aims to further organize and inform the city's efforts and measure our effectiveness while also communicating with our community members on the city's efforts to prevent and address homelessness. So I'm going to first get into the results of the 2020 Santa Monica homeless count, which was conducted late on the night of February 23, 2022. Chair Elliott, I know you were out there with us. We basically deployed slightly differently, or I should say our volunteer and community member deployment and training looked a little different this year. While our methodology for actually conducting the point-in-time homeless count remained consistent with previous years. Our our count is conducted in conjunction with the Greater Los Angeles County Homeless Count. All of the West Side of LA County's PAF five counted on the same night. And I should mention that before I reveal our results, that our local results will be put into further regional context when the LA Homeless Services Authority or LASSA releases their 2022 homeless count results anticipated later this summer. So the 2022 Santa Monica homeless count saw an 11% decrease from the 908 individuals that were counted in 2020 to 807 individuals when we counted in 2022. I should add that there was no count conducted locally or in LA County in 2021 due to the ongoing COVID pandemic. Now, I should note that the 11% decrease or 100, basically 90, 101 individual reduction is almost entirely due to reduced capacity at our local shelter and interim housing programs. The number of beds available locally has been reduced significantly since the onset of the COVID pandemic at the direction of LA County Department of Public Health. If you've ever been to San Mo Shell, the San Santa Monica Shelter, the the old bunk bed style dorms were just not conducive to individuals with the viral pandemic going around. So a number of beds were spaced out to make sure that we could have ample protection for people to prevent the spread of the disease. Now, I will note that we did not see a corresponding increase on the unsheltered or the street count, which remained relatively flat between 2020 and 2022. And what we take away from this is a couple of different things, that the city's local efforts to address homelessness and get people into housing programs and connected to services, that they're working. And we also know that although our local interim housing capacity was significantly reduced, the number of interim housing options available throughout LA County was significantly higher. This is due in part to significant investments in the Project Room Key program that the county and the state put together to help move high-risk COVID, COVID-high-risk individuals into hotel and motel rooms with supportive services. As well as new interim housing or shelter programs in Venice, such as the Bridge Home, the Mary Garcia's Bridge Home Shelter just down the street from us in Venice. So the message that we have here is although our shelter count was, capacity was reduced, the added capacity across the region helped Santa Monica do better so that folks could have a place to go despite the reduced local capacity. Again, the local results will be put into further context and will take on additional meeting once we have the countywide results, which are anticipated later this summer. I will note that there was a sharp increase in people counted who were living in vehicles in tents or in makeshift shelters, otherwise known as encampments. And we understand that that increase within that subcategory can contribute to the perception that homelessness and street homelessness has sharply and significantly increased. We also know that the nighttime count, our count was conducted after midnight on the night of February 23. The the nighttime population may be very different than what people see and experience and feel during the daytime. In the same way that we know our Santa Monica community swells during the daytime with workforce, visitors, all sorts of people visiting the city. We also know that where people are bedded down during the night may not be where they hang out during the day and their behavior may certainly look very different at 2:00 in the morning than it does at noon. So now I wanted to get into a quick update on the implementation of the city's four-pillar strategy to address homelessness. If you didn't know, in March 2019, the city council adopted the four-pillar strategy to help organize the city's approach to make sure that we weren't investing too much on any one component of addressing or preventing homelessness. So appropriately, the first pillar is to prevent Santa Monicans from becoming homeless in the first place and to increase affordable housing opportunities. The second pillar is to address the behavioral health needs of vulnerable community members. The third pillar is to maintain equitable access to safe, fun, and healthy open spaces. So we're talking about our parks, our beach, our downtown, our libraries, et cetera. And finally, the fourth pillar is very important. It's to strengthen regional capacity to address homelessness. When we say this, we mean making sure that other communities across the county were one of 88 cities in Los Angeles County. We want to make sure that other cities and that the county are doing their fair share so that folks don't feel like they have to come to Santa Monica in order to access housing and service resources. So with that, I just want to touch on a couple key updates under each of the four pillars. And then I wanted to move on to some additional questions that had been shared with me as it relates to people with disabilities. So for pillar one, this is preventing Santa Monicans from becoming homeless and increasing affordable housing options. The city was awarded by the federal Housing and Urban Development Department over 100 emergency housing vouchers that the city chose to prioritize for households experiencing homelessness. Our focus is to match those vouchers to individuals and families who have been staying for long lengths in our local interim housing or shelter programs by getting them paired to subsidized housing vouchers where they can move into apartments in the city or in other areas of Los Angeles County through an interjurisdictional agreement with the county. We also are focusing on new eviction prevention resources through an enhanced partnership with Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. This is made possible through allocated HUD, I'm sorry, ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Emergency Assistance Funds that the council authorized the city to allocate in that way. We have seen that with the expiration of some of the COVID-era eviction prevention or eviction moratoriums and rental assistance programs that there's gonna be, and there already is, a wave of of eviction cases. And we want to make sure that our vulnerable Santa Monica residents have access to full-scope legal services to represent them in these cases. And finally, our ongoing efforts to help prevent folks living with disabilities or our seniors on fixed incomes from becoming homeless by our ongoing work through the preserving our diversity senior housing program as well as the senior task force in which our city and many departments and local service providers and county partners are really focused on on folks who are at high risk of losing their housing through interdepartmental coordination. Second pillar refers to delivering behavioral health treatment to those who need it. So the city's continued its investment in multiple, multi-disciplinary teams. And these are teams that are equipped with, they go beyond homeless, traditional homeless outreach. They have licensed mental health professionals, peers with lived experience, doctors, psychiatrists, nurses, substance use specialists who go out deploying proactively in our community to the areas with the highest concentration of homelessness to deliver street-based care to people who need it, while also making that connection to mainstream housing and supportive service programs. The Santa Monica Fire Department has launched its Community Response Unit, or CRU, which is designed to take some of the burden off of fire engines for lower acuity 911 calls. The focus is on on these lower acuity calls, so it's not 100% dedicated to people experiencing homelessness. It's also been useful in responding to seniors and other vulnerable housed populations who may call 911. But when the engine arrives, they realize that it's more of a, less than acute call. And what the person really needs more than anything is an assessment and connection to mainstream social services so that they can live safely in their home and connect to a medical center. Additional upcoming partnerships to address behavioral health include a partnership with the Department of Mental Health. A therapeutic transport program will provide a van staffed with a peer with lived experience or a community health worker with lived experience, as well as a licensed mental health practitioner. Eventually, when fully staffed and optimized, this resource will be deployed 24/7 and solely dedicated to Santa Monica. The program hasn't launched yet, and one of the main holdups on deploying this resource is the statewide shortage of behavioral healthcare workers. This is leading to folks who are not super enthusiastic about working overnight or weekends and folks who are less thrilled about providing field-based work, especially in a field where so many telehealth and virtual phone and web-based practice settings are available. And finally, the city has, we've released a request for proposals for a team of specialists to study the feasibility of a behavioral health center that could be perhaps cited in Santa Monica and dedicated to not just Santa Monica, but the West Side, really focused on Santa Monica's needs first. And this work is underway. A couple of proposals were submitted in response to the RFP. And the city will be hopefully making a recommendation to council to award the the contract to a team of specialists in the coming weeks and months. The work will then carry us into the fall and winter, assessing the suitability of certain types of of programs. And finally, the city, through the development agreement with Providence St. John's, will access, I want to say $10 million in resources to directly address and advance behavioral health treatment for Santa Monica and the West Side. Pillar three refers to safe, clean, and healthy open spaces. So this really refers to partnerships within our police department, including the Homeless Liaison Program, which is specifically dedicated to addressing long-term homeless and quality of life issues. Other efforts include the Downtown Santa Monica or DTSM Parks ambassadors, who you've probably seen when you've gone through Palisades, Tongva, or Reed Park, really to address health, safety, and cleanliness for everybody by addressing things like litter removal, talking to people about the park rules, not smoking in the park, things of that nature. And finally, our public works team has made some efforts at reimagining and redesigning certain areas of public spaces that have not been used for their intended use so that folks could use the park in ways that they were intended, while we can also make sure that people are connected to the services that are available. And finally, I mentioned Project Room Key. There are some other efforts throughout LA County that have been expanding the number of interim housing options, as well as permanent housing options, which is great. The city knows that we are one of 88 cities in this county. We can't do it all, so we need all the help we can get from our local partners. We remain actively engaged at the West Side Cities Council of Governments, advocating for solutions that make sense for all of the West Side and for LA County, making sure that Santa Monica and similar smaller cities get our share of these regional resources. So with that, I would like to pause and see if there are any questions as it relates to homelessness. Chair Elliott, I did have a couple of questions that came through related to the VI SPADA or the Coordinated Entry System Assessment. I can get into that right now if you'd like. And then the other question was related to the federal definition of chronic homelessness. But I know I've thrown a lot out there, and I'm gonna take a breath and see if there's any other questions.
I see Commissioner Sussman has his hands up. Do you have a question for the speaker?
Yeah, I want to ask you, I'm disabled myself. I'm on Social Security. I'm in Section 8 housing. I have a friend who was homeless at a time when I was homeless, a lot 10 years ago here in Santa Monica. But he just lost his benefits, his insurance. Everything he was receiving has been cut off. He has nowhere to go. And and this was all out of empathy of him helping an elderly lady who unfortunately passed away and left him some property. He's listed the property for sale. He has not received a dime yet. His Section 8 has been cut off. His SSI has been cut off. His Medicare has been, he's been disenrolled from. He has nothing to live on. And Section 8 wants him out. And I'm just wondering if the city representative has any department person in mind? You know,
Yeah.
that he can go to. I mean, he's a longtime resident of Santa Monica. And although he is due to inherit once, yeah, I mean,
Sure.
he's listed the property for sale, but in, he wanted to be honest with the city.
Right.
He wanted to be honest with Section 8. He wanted to be honest with Social Security. And by doing so, he's ready, I mean, he's gonna be on the brakes.
Yeah. Chair Sussman, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. And I definitely would like to connect with either Chair, I'm sorry, Chair Elliott or Noe to see if there's a way to to follow up with you outside of the meeting to get more information on how we could contact that person, because that's certainly something that we would like to have somebody speak with that individual to get more specifics on that situation.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you just want to send an email out to Alex, can forward it to me and I can forward it to the proper division in the City of Santa Monica, who will be better equipped than I am to reach out.
Thank you.
And if folks want to use the raise your hand feature, if possible, if you want to ask a question, that would be great. I have a question. It kind of gives context to the the questions I had on the VI SPADA is people with disabilities, they're they're being undercounted in terms of, you know, how many people with disabilities are homeless, experiencing homelessness, houseless. And part of it is how we capture demographic data on people with disabilities. I've gotten really in the weeds with this. I've looked at how we collect disability. You know, it's usually, do you have a disability? Yes, no. Then what is your disability type? Has, you know, eight options. You go into another system, they only have six options. You go in another system, they have double barrels. So you have, you know, LASS system, HMIS, the EHR, VI SPADA, you have all these sources of datas getting, are you disabled and what's your disability type in eight different ways? So it's 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 hard to get those apples to apples and see what it is. So part of the undercount is just due to disability. So I'm trying to figure out how we can move the needle on that. And then another issue around disability is is there's not capturing about like what assistive technology people are using, what are their supports? Things that if we measured, we can, you know, target an intervention. All all they're doing is then, oh, you know, what's your symptomology? What, you know, the medical model? So there's kind of two things I'm hoping we can move towards is, one, doing a better job of, you know, are you disabled disability-type demographics? And then augmenting that with, you know, helpful demographics around people with disability. What are they using that's helpful? And that's usually around assistive technology. So that's kind of the context I was coming with that question is, I know the VI SPADA collects disability demographics in a certain way that's different than other ways. So that that's the context for it.
Gotcha. And I realized I took it pretty deep in the weeds there, too, without providing much additional context. The the city, years and years ago, was an early adopter of moving away from a first-come, first-served approach to to helping people experiencing homelessness to a model that is now focused on serving people with the greatest needs first, very similar to how you might see people treat an emergency room. Just because you were first in line or first in the in the room doesn't mean that if somebody else comes in with more acute or more chronic needs that they that they'll be seen after you. So the city really started this work by using a standardized tool, I want to say back in about 2008, to develop our our by-name service registry, our list of our most chronic and vulnerable homeless participants. And since then, service prioritization and coordinated entry has become not just a local and regional best practice, but it's been required for agencies that receive HUD funding for chronic homelessness. So as my dog's barking there, I I mentioned that the VI SPADA is the county that both the, or is the tool that both the City of Santa Monica and the LA County homeless service system use to help quantify somebody's vulnerability. And and yeah, Chair Elliott, you're right, there are a number of questions and measures on the VI SPADA survey. It stands for Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool. It's certainly a mouthful. There's a number of questions there, and I flagged the ones that have references to disabilities, and you can see how they're currently framed. Do you have any physical disabilities that would limit the type of housing you could access or would make it hard to live independently because you'd need help? They then ask if folks have become homeless or lost their previous housing due to a disability, and then it breaks into different types of disabilities. They ask that for some folks who may need certain disability-related accessibility features, they ask what types of assisted devices they might need or what types of assistance they might need from staff along the way. But to your point, it's, it may not be nearly as comprehensive as it needs to be. And that's something that we would raise for the LA County or the LASSA Homeless Services Authority about potentially rethinking their tool. about potentially rethinking their tool. And then to the question that came up separately was the US Department of Housing and Urban Development has defined chronic homelessness very narrowly to folks who have either been chronically homeless for 12 or more months consecutively, or I believe three episodes in four years, or maybe four episodes of homelessness in three years. And the head of household has to, has it, has to have a disabling condition. So I can send you the information on how the federal government for these federal housing resources has defined disability. But I definitely know that that's a question of some interest to the, maybe of interest to the commission.
Catherine, I see your hand up.
Catherine, do you have a question? Yeah, um, I see, I can't, I'm not, I mean, I can't even see myself. But anyway, the thing about homelessness that I was, had been very interested in is what is actually being done to create situations that will alleviate these problems? I think all this talk about intersexuality and everything that we've done and the, and the programs and all that, they're all great. I suppose they're needed, but, but I know when we went to this homelessness meeting with Marielle years ago, she pointed out that one of the things that she really wanted to see happen was on the ground, a different way of looking at homeless situations where they, it would not be individual, helping individuals, but having a more community oriented situation where the homeless could go, especially the, the, the mental health on the ground. And I think in general, that's what's frustrating for me and for everyone, for all these wonderful plans that are out there and all the analysis and what everybody is doing on the ground, having actual solutions. You know, that is homes for the homeless and treatment for the, for the mentally ill and all that. It's either very, very slow or it's certainly very difficult to notice on the ground. So I, I just would like to see the city do more on the ground, you know, building kind of solutions, like they were supposed to build that, the center right here on 14th Street in Michigan. You know, for homeless, it's been vacant. I don't see anything happening, things like that. Basically, on the ground, kind of practicality. Get it going, get it done, find the spaces for these homeless. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you for the comment and the question. I just, it was, it reminded me that I did fail to unpack one of the themes that we really looked at in our May 11th discussion was related to this idea of system optimization. I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole on this commission meeting, but it's basically the idea that we move folks, an optimized or a balanced system will move people from either the streets or interim housing or shelter towards a permanent home. And then we see our system locally and in the county, you get these bottlenecks when you have nowhere to exit people to. When you, when you know that homes and homelessness, but you don't have a permanent home for people. Or you have two permanent homes for every five people that need one. And you have this element of competition and when in reality, we know that we need multiple options for every interim housing resource with which to exit people. So we, we as staff definitely advise the city council to be thoughtful about balancing investments so that we're not making all of our investments on what we call front end solutions or front end interventions such as street outreach. Those street outreach has its time and place, but at the end of the day, if, if people agree to services and agree to housing, but there's nowhere for the team to take them, the impacts and the effectiveness of that outreach is going to be limited. So that's why the city is so focused on expanding our, not just our permanent supportive housing for people experiencing chronic homelessness, but also affordable housing at all income levels, knowing that that's really important in preventing homelessness and creating these opportunities for other folks.
Commissioner Zaria, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a question. If anyone knows that the homeless population is vaccinated against COVID, since they do use community resources and they're a part of our community. Not sure if this, if, if someone actually collects the data for that. Just wondering.
Trying to unmute myself again. That's a great question. I do know that our city funded partners, including the People Concern, which operates our access center or the local access center, multiple interim housing sites and street-based engagement or outreach teams, that they have been actively involved in outreach and education and offering community-based vaccinations against COVID to people experiencing homelessness. I believe LA County, either Department of Public Health or Department of Health Services would have the data regarding the number of people who have been vaccinated in each of the different service planning areas. And if it's, all right, I can reach out, see what I can find on that if there is data that's available. And I could share that back with, with No Way or Chair Elliott, depending on what we find. It's a great question though.
Thank you so much.
I have a few questions, but so I'll just jump in if folks want to get in the queue after. But I, I think, you know, you brought up the, the shortage statewide of behavioral health practitioners. I'm a social worker. I worked at OPCC at the access center for years. Is there any talk, one thing I haven't seen about the city considering pay increases of some sort or bonuses? Because this space is getting really competitive. And when I was working there, I didn't make a wage to be able to live in the city. And I loved the work, but it wasn't sustainable. And this other dynamic happens where, you know, I had just started and I'm working with like probably the most difficult case load folks on the service registry as a green clinician. When in, in a perfect world, our most seasoned, best LCSWs with years of experience would be working with those service registry folks. Our newer clinicians would learn the ropes, but the incentives are putting our, our green clinicians with, you know, in the most difficult situations, which I think is contributing to burnout and retention. So I hope a strategy on retaining talent, bringing talent in, which costs money is, is on the table. And just, and also one of the weird things about behavioral health versus other health is the messenger matters a little bit more. So we talk about in the literature, therapeutic alliance, a lot of, just, I bring that up because I'm, I'm, I've seen a lot of data that makes me worried about our young men out there. They're not reaching out for care. There's not enough male behavioral health professionals that they feel comfortable to talk with. And there's a lot of populations that just aren't represented in the field as well. So I'm hoping there's some, some looking at getting in, new people into the field with some efforts because a lot of folks are not represented and it matters that you have someone you relate to in this field. And then one last thing, I'll, I don't want to monopolize, but just, I hope they're also looking at kind of innovative and evidence-based care, because I always hear, oh, we're putting more money, but like, are we doing? What, what does that mean? Are we trying to do like, at the county, they're doing like transcranial magnetic stimulation? Amazing results. If, if you can get people to like, I hope we're looking at the newest, latest, greatest evidence-based practices. Being really intentional with how we spend money on new behavioral health, not just increasing the figure, but being intentional with it. Thank you.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot there. I can echo a lot of your sentiments and assure you that in our written staff report, as well as the presentation, staff did present to council this idea that salaries for behavioral health workers are needing to go up to be competitive and that that may mean that our contracts locally or regionally need to be a little bit more competitive in order to attract and retain qualified workers. And as a fellow LCSW like you, who also got my start in the field at a homeless services agency, I can, I can totally resonate with what you were describing in terms of dealing with the most chronic situations with some of the, with some of least experience, and that can be challenging. So we're definitely looking at ways that we can incentivize that. We also know that there's an importance of having people with lived experience involved in every step of program design and evaluation. And that the peers with lived experience and community health workers that are embedded with these street-based engagement teams, they, like you said, the messenger matters. We've seen it time and time again, where the community health worker or the peer has a, develops a stronger bond in some cases with the individuals they're outreach in, than maybe the psychiatrist with their 10 years of training or the social worker. And that's where the teams have learned and trained themselves to set their ego aside and really view it holistically, trying to find whatever that person might need and whoever they might need to connect with on the team.
And I think just one more question. Can you speak a little bit about what's going to happen when 988 is implemented? And I think late July.
Unfortunately, I, I know what you're talking about with 988. I want to say it's either the national or the statewide crisis alternative hotline. I don't know enough about what the plans are at the state and county and local level to give you a thoughtful and informed response, but it's definitely something that city staff are tracking. And I believe those efforts are headed out of the city manager's office and the Office of Emergency Management. I can definitely make a note when I do hear, or when we do find out more about those efforts to get back to the commission with any updates that might be relevant.
And I did find, the, the report backs on the great questions the commission has brought up.
Yeah, and I did find something in buried perhaps in, on page 21 of the 50-page staff report that we presented that might have been what a previous commissioner mentioned regarding a development at 1413 Michigan Avenue. That's, that would probably be the Laurel Development, which is developed by EAH, which is an affordable housing provider that is designed and will create 57 new homes of permanent supportive housing with supportive services for people experiencing chronic homelessness. That is anticipated to be completed by the end of 2023. So we definitely know and we empathize with folks who say that's great, but what are we doing in the meantime? And, and we know that it's a layered approach. We need to invest in permanent solutions while also doing something to meet the immediate needs that are in our communities now. And also do some work upstream so that we can prevent more people from falling into homelessness. Because we know it's way harder and way more costly to intervene after a family or household has already ended up experiencing homelessness.
Just something, there, I think there's a lot of opportunities in the, the prevention space in mental health. Just in my work, I noticed people aren't aware of existing amazing resources. So I love for the opportunity to partner more closely with our PIO to let the community know, like, you know, there's the free headspace, free I prevail, the VA has great apps, like something, you know, our young men to get them engaged before waiting seven to 11 years, whatever the statistic is, just making it a fun game or something. But we, we can help to curate things for PIO to get out to the community because I, I do presentations for the county all over the, all over the county. And I, I pretty much just curate digital resources a lot of the time. And they're like, oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know about that. I didn't know I could get food delivered. I didn't know there was this great app for free. So I think if there's an opportunity for us to work together to get those curated resources out so people are aware of them.
More raised hands. Does anyone have any final questions or thoughts?
Well, we, we have a number of things. Some questions. We look forward to the responses of them. I mean, this, this is an ongoing issue and we're, we're very interested in behavioral health, homelessness, how it affects people with disabilities, how it affects the community in general. So this is not going to, this is our first conversation, but we're going to be definitely more engaged with this moving forward. And we're, I'll speak for myself. I'm open to partner with, with folks at the city to, you know, compromise skill set, but I'm sure other folks are happy to collaborate, to do what we can. And again, I really appreciate you coming out and look forward to the responses. And thanks to commission for, for your good questions.
All right. Well, thank you again for having me. And I look forward to getting back to commissioners with responses to the items that we discussed and the questions that came up.
I'm going to move on, on the agenda. Agenda item five, staff administrative items, five A, reports from the ad hoc committees and liaisons and discussion and possible action on reestablishing and or establishing additional ones. The first item I, Ad Hoc Committee on Digital Equity, Chair Elliott, Commissioner Zaria, Commissioner Link Ellis. Let me catch my breath. I have some updates. I, I think I sent them in, in an email, but on the Santa Monica library site, we have a curated section focusing on, on disabled authors and other books and library resources for the disability community. That, that's living. So if you guys have any ideas to add to that list, like I have some, you know, like Judy Hume's book and other popular ones. But if you guys have more ideas, it's, I'm totally open. All we have to do is email the library and they can help us to keep that updated. Are we going to switch interpreters?
This is Carla speaking. Yes, we are switching now.
Can everyone? Okay, so we, we have that site on the library where we can curate works, kind of what we did in person. Now we can do digitally with the library. We also updated the accessibility resources section on the Santa Monica library website. And I submitted the, the paperwork or the templates to update the accessibility website on the Santa Monica City website. But there's a backlog, so it's in process, but I'll keep you posted. And also the transition with from blue jeans to teens and just figuring out the hybrid meetings. And there's been a lot of back and forth with city staff. I've shared resources on the accessibility settings for teams, how to provide end user support for people with disabilities, just trying to give those resources to support folks from the public or people on the commission to, on how to use the accessibility features on their phone, their laptop, trying to think. on their phone, their laptop, trying to think in advance what issues might come up, the phone number on how to call Apple, the phone number on how to call Google, how to call Microsoft to get someone to talk to 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 work on accessibility features. So I'm just trying to give them the take them one click, one call away from something that can be helpful so they don't have to fish around for it. So ISD has that. And hopefully, just every meeting, teams will get a little bit smoother. Also, I've been giving presentations on community and accessibility resources for the Department of Mental Health. I shared them with the local group in Service Area Five, which supports all the city of Santa Monica is in Service Area Five. So I shared the resources I curated with those folks. So hopefully, if if folks get supported by the county in Santa Monica, they'll be sharing those. And what else? There's there's the Department of Public Health also is going to have a lot more digital content. And I reached out to them that there's a partnership opportunity there to advertise and get the word out on on great digital resources or Zooms or whatever. So we should take advantage of that marketing opportunity. It's going to launch soon. It's it's focused on the West Side. I I just signed up to to learn more info and I'll bring back what the next steps are. But just looking for easy opportunities for collaboration that we can leverage. And as kind of we've been on this ad hoc for a while, one of the deliverables is I want to write a letter to city council about kind of steps they can take. Definitely a piece around just curating existing digital resources. So that that'll be my deliverable. I'll circle back at the next meeting with more concrete, but that's kind of where I want this to to culminate is with the city, a letter to council with some recommendations, some things we can do concretely to to improve digital equity. So that was a lot, but does anyone else on the committee have any updates? I think you're muted Nancy.
I did. I do have some ads that are available for people who are deaf and hard of hearing, parents, groups, you know, loner hearing aids and things like that. I will forward the list to you. It was put together by a woman who is an audiologist and it's about finding financial assistance. So that's something that you can add. So I just got that today. I will forward it to you.
I'll move on to updates from the ad hoc committee on mobility issues, Commissioner Block and Commissioner Cosmea Dodge.
Hi, it's Karen. I don't have any updates because I haven't known how to proceed. So I guess my next step is to write a letter to the city council regarding my concerns about adding handicap parking.
Can you share the the issue you encountered?
Pardon me?
Can can you share again that that the issue you encountered around? I believe you sent me that email about it.
Well, I haven't encountered any issues because I didn't know how to move forward. So I believe that my next step is to take the letter and send and forward it to the city council, potentially, maybe. The look on your face says no.
Oh, no, no, I'm just trying to get a better sense of of the problem you're addressing so that that we're all on the same page and maybe can offer some suggestions or or insights that could be helpful in crafting that letter.
So so my issue is that I I would like to see more disabled parking on streets. Many streets have absolutely none and no loading and unloading zone. And I haven't known how to get that before the city council as an issue.
Existing.
Have that look again.
No, no, that that's helpful context. Now, now I'm reminded of your letter too. Have past commissioners, how have you handled getting issues like this to city councils awareness or or other ad hocks dealing with similar issues? What what kind of steps have they taken? Nancy or Commissioner Lake?
Yeah. One of the issues is we've had the traffic people come in and speak to us about it. And, you know, especially, you know, disabled parking on the street where there's additional time because people, you know, who have handicaps, as a rule, it takes them longer to get out of their car than the 90 minutes. And we we didn't get very far on that. The other thing was in parking, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that people with handicap vehicles still pay to park. So there's no longer free parking in parking garages. I don't know if that issue was ever resolved. Because it was, again, there were no loading zones. The issue was, you know, about the amount of time when it was reduced to 90 minutes, I believe. And then 60 minutes free time.
Catherine, do you do you have your hand up to add? Commissioner Cosmea Dodge? Commissioner Cosmea Dodge, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
Okay, no, I was, is this where I just say what's happening with the beach wheelchair or is that another ad hoc?
Oh, you you can add that update too.
Well, because it was mobility, it was mobility issues. This I thought, yeah.
That's the ad hoc we're talking about.
Oh, well, so I'll just, I went down to check on the beach wheelchairs and unfortunately we've lost one. I'm going to try, I'm going to check with the manager of of Perry's to find out what happened, but it was the one that was that it was broken after the whole pandemic. It was in terrible shape. I think it had been left outside and so we're minus one, we only have one, but it's still down at Perry's. The Perry's, it's at the end of Hollister and it's still available, you know, for for use. So that's all. I was just reporting on that.
Thank you for that update. Nancy, do you have your Commissioner Lake Ellis, do you have your hand up again?
No, I can't get my hand down, actually. It's not lowering. So if you can lower it, that would be wonderful.
I think it's down now. But but to circle back, Commissioner Block, maybe getting the the traffic folks or or someone who manages that from the city to come by as a future agenda item would be helpful as well.
It's interesting you say that, Commissioner Elliott, because a trap, a traffic person did come speak to us a couple of meetings ago. And one of the things that I found so interesting that he said was that the city wants to get to a place where people don't use their cars, they walk, they bike, et cetera, et cetera, which is terrific and a worthy goal, but ignores the the fact that from a census standpoint, our population is getting older and older, which means walking and biking will not be a a good resource for a lot of people. And I sort of thought he almost gave me my argument as to why we needed more, more parking spaces, not less, because we have an aging population.
Catherine, your your hands up again. Do you have a response? Commissioner Cosmea Dodge? You're muted if you're trying to talk. Commissioner Block, your hands up again.
Who is our point person now to send things to? Has that changed?
Yes, Noe Mendoza is our our new liaison. That's probably a good update I should have gave to begin. We just got a administrative person. I'm not sure what his title is, but before we used, it's a staff assistant three with the city. And I can share that in an email following the meeting, but we do have a point person now, which is actually a milestone forward. We were without somebody for a while. So that the communications last minute on this meeting were probably a little different. Usually I was sending them all out, but had to get them back into my role of of just doing the chair stuff. But we do have a city person who who would be a good person to talk to about who we might want to talk to to address some of the issues you've brought up. He can do some follow ups and and find the right person. That's usually what I do is I I ask someone at the city who's the right person to to bring in or or to exchange an email or jump on a phone call with. I I start with the our our staff person. So actually, that that's a good concrete thing to do is to reach out to Noe and get a better sense of who directly to talk to to address those issues you brought up.
Great, will do.
Something happen.
Thank you.
You guys want to add anything to any updates on that? Ad hoc committee or can we move on? All right, I'm going to keep it moving. I don't think either Commissioner Charles or Wetter are here for five, five, three, and five, four ad hoc committee examining the state of the accessibility of recreation programs, Commissioner Nicholas, Commissioner Azariah, Commissioner Sussman. Commissioner Nicholas emailed me today that he couldn't make it, but he's looking forward to providing an update next month. He's been working on it. But Commissioner Azariah, Commissioner Sussman, do you have any updates on this ad hoc?
No, I don't have any update.
Did we lose Commissioner? I guess we'll keep it moving. I have new ad hocks. I just kind of carried that over, but I'm thinking it might be more appropriate to to have this conversation in the new fiscal year when we just, it doesn't seem like ending the fiscal year with adding new ad hocks makes a lot of sense. But are are we okay with that? Or does anyone have a burning ad hoc that they really want to bring up now? And I'm going to take that as a, we'll keep it moving. So next item five B, discussion and possible action regarding item four A at the May 24, 2022 city council meeting, discussion and direction to staff on best practices to change the agenda formatting to make council meetings more efficient and consideration of costs and implementation of hybrid meetings with a call and option. I sent the link to that. Hopefully, folks got a a chance to check it out. It's it's something I've heard from the community and and from the commission, just what's what's the deal with? How are these meetings going to happen moving forward? Are they going to be hybrid? That's a lot of the conversation was they they were just kind of studying what the cost would be. The city council is trying to see what the cost would be for doing hybrid. How is that going to look? And there was a lot of conversation or it was brought up by multiple council members like, how do we make this accessible for people with disabilities? And and there there was wanting that information, but not a lot of concrete examples of how to do it. So that that's why I wanted to bring it up at this meeting because I think we can have some great insights of on how to implement a accessible hybrid meeting. They also talked about the platforms it might be on. The the city staff recommended Teams, it seemed like, because the options are Teams or Blue Jeans. And I think I speak, I prefer Teams over Blue Jeans. And if they they talked about Zoom because they've seen other environments, but there's some security constraints and some cost constraints, but they're going to explore it, I think. But it it seems like Teams is probably, that's my read of it, might be the direction if they go with hybrid. But they could really just use our insights on how to make it accessible as possible. I I think I we really need to have hybrid moving forward. In fact, when I presented at the end of April for May's mental health month, there was a COVID exposure at the city council meeting. And I wasn't even made way to made aware of it until weeks after and not directly. So I'm I'm a little even stronger about the need for for a hybrid because it's inevitable that there's going to be a a COVID exposure and for folks with people with disability from the public, from potential commissioners, some of them are at higher risk of COVID and just can't take that risk, but they need to be able to participate. So the only path forward, in in my view, is is we have to go with hybrid. So how can we be a good partner to the city and and make meetings as accessible as possible? So that that's a long winded context, but are there any thoughts on on how to move forward and and have the best possible hybrid meetings or any thoughts on on this agenda item? Commissioner Lake?
I really feel that we need to strongly encourage that we have a hybrid and we definitely need an in person component. I think it's very hard for people who have disabilities and have communications challenges to do this virtually. Especially, you know, I hope in the fiscal year, we will move into, you know, meeting monthly or every other month because it's very hard to, you know, have an idea and move forward on it when when we're not together and we're not, you know, we're not all on the same page. You know, a lot of it's just technology right now. So I really hope we can encourage them to have the hybrid mode. I know that I was watching an LAUSD meeting, that was a hybrid. People were calling in, there were people there, and they seem to be doing it successfully. I do not know if it was Teams. Do you happen to know, is the city have this contract with Blue Jeans? Or do they just have a contract with Teams or both?
I know they have Teams. I'm not sure the state of. Blue Jeans. And also Teams, another pro for using it is that we get the meeting recording. So we meet all like the the all those regulations around meeting minutes and records. So that was a pro. It's already in the cost. It it already covers the security. It's already been through like the IT processes. Those are part of the pros and no additional costs because we already have it.
It also has a captioning component built into it, which I would recommend if we did ad hoc meetings, we could use it and not necessarily not use a cart person for, you know, our regular meetings. But I do do that in other organizations where when we have a small committee, we use the, you know, the built in Microsoft captioning component. It's not great. It's not as good as, you know, a live person, but it certainly suffices.
Yeah, I've seen that in in situations where, you know, there's a very late. Yeah, I've seen that in situations where, you know, there's a very late request and they couldn't get an ASL interpreter and they use that. It wasn't perfect, but it was definitely better than nothing and they were able to meet the objectives of the meeting. Another thing that came up now that I remember is they were talking about too, how to structure the meeting in the best way because the meetings are like eight hours and people are, want to comment on something, but it doesn't come on until two in the morning. So we may want to think about should our ideas on having public comments all at the beginning or just our perspective on the best way to organize the meetings as well as something they probably want our feedback as well as how to meet the accessibility needs of the community. And this, this topic is going to come up again. This was just kind of the research phase where the council just talks about it. They got the budget. They, you know, threw out ideas, but you can expect something more formal to come around. So if you haven't had a chance to watch this, definitely watch it. And when it comes up again, we'll be that much more prepared for recommendations. But this is something I feel we definitely should chime in on. Yes, suggestions on how to provide technical assistance to someone with a disability. Maybe two minutes, maybe they need two minutes and 30 seconds. Just I think we need to give those concrete examples of how to help because there is a lot of, yeah, you know, high level, we need to make it accessible, but there wasn't as much in what I heard about concrete examples. And that's where I think our commission can be very helpful.
True.
I just encourage all the commissioners to watch that recording and this is going to come up again and maybe in the following fiscal year, next time it comes up, we'll be concrete and maybe like have a written deliverable with our wants for hybrid. Or when we circle back to this item, we'll, we'll just, I do want to act on this. I just don't, it might be a little premature and it's end of the fiscal year, but I definitely wanted to bring this to our group's awareness ASAP so we can start thinking about it. And when we come back to this topic, I think we should really think about the deliverable. And this is something I think we need to act on. If it's a written recommendation or definitely chiming in at the meeting with our two minutes, but I think we should get some in writing to council on how to do as good a job as possible because this is critical. Commissioner Azariah?
Did you say that there's a video? I'm sorry, I missed it. There, you said the recording of meeting?
Yeah, in the meeting agenda, there's a link to the, the recording of the city council meeting.
Okay, I didn't get the agenda. Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
And the agenda moving forward, it's always going to be posted on the website as well. So and I'll send a follow-up email with maybe some helpful bookmarks. But as long as you have the Disability Commission website, usually like a couple of business days, we have to post it. So it's always going to be there as well. And usually you'll get it in an email, but it should always be on the web. It has to be actually, so people can publicly comment on it.
Thank you.
And city council meetings are always recorded and you can go topic by topic. So you don't have to watch through the whole thing. They have it organized. And I had this on there too, because when we get into the regular cadence of not, of meeting more frequently, we really want to have our agendas synchronized with city council. So this is kind of a test run, but moving forward, we want to synchronize with what's going on actively with council. And now that we have a staff member, hopefully we can do a better job of that. We've kind of been winging it the last year.
Commissioner, I have a question. Trying to sync with city council, are we responding to them? I mean, we, I have no idea what their agenda is for tomorrow night. So are we, are we before or after the city council agenda? I mean.
I mean, I'd like to be. Sometimes like I remember when we were in person, we were ahead. We got a preview, someone from the city would do a rounds of all the commissions and get our feedback. That's ideal. But the, this item's from the last one from May 24th. So we're reacting to that study session. I like to be proactive to the extent possible, but it's going to be a mixture of both. There's going to be, and sometimes the comments from the meeting lead to something we need to react to that aren't quite in the, just the posting. But again, I think we need to, we'll improve our relationship and have a better sense of what's going on so we can plan our meetings and be proactive when we can and reactive when we have to be. And any other questions, comments, thoughts on this agenda item before we move forward? All right, I'm going to move on to the next item, five C, discussion and possible action regarding strategy for outreach to fill vacant commission seats. So again, this is the end of the fiscal year. Some, I believe Commissioner Hill, it's his last meeting and his term ends. So we're going to have one or a couple of seats. The folks should have gotten a communication from city council if they're eligible to serve another term. There should have been some communications out there. So there's either one or two commissioners who are eligible for another term. I believe Commissioner Wetter and I'm just drawing a blank. And then there's going to be, depending on if they accept to extend or not, that'll determine if we have one or more than one seats. And there's a couple people that are, have applied. There's been, I believe, a social media blast. I think it's one in the paper. And I sent an email out to all the neighborhood associations, but I'm still hoping we get more people ASAP. So if you guys have folks interested or can get the word out, reshare the, the social media post or, I sent an email out with like instructions on how to apply if you want to share that. But I just wanted to open this up. If you guys have any kind of last minute things to get another round of folks applied so we can really hit the ground running July 1 and have a good cohort of folks applying.
Are the two seats available, are they designated for people with disabilities or not? Do you know?
I believe one does not have to be. And I believe at least one does, definitely if there's two, they'll one-on-one and then hypotheticals on how things go, but I think there is an opening for non-disability seats.
Are there any people do know that are not going to be participating in other commissions? Like I don't see social services or seniors that are not going to continue on? Have they, have they merged all the other commissions yet?
That's a good question. My understanding was July 1 is when that stuff like. I don't think they're reappointing, but I, again, this is something I'd, I'd want 100% clarity from the city, but my understanding was July 1 is when we're in the new normal. There's no more of that quarterly restriction, all these, this, this, this has been an unprecedentedly weird year. And I believe July 1, it becomes that human services commission or whatever the new name, that's the consolidation of the three. Yeah. And then that's something I think we should think about is we probably want to have a liaison for the new one for sure.
One thing I want to note is that we have always met in the Ken Edward Center. And there's a room that is looped and, you know, all the accommodations have been built in. But they have taken the parking lot and they have turned it into a key card for staff. So any parking that we would have had has been taken away unless there are arrangements made for us to be able to use it after six.
Yeah, that's a good question. Just if, when we do hybrid, if there's an in-person element, where is that going to be? They haven't given me a concrete of, I think they brought up some potential places, even the chambers was one idea, but I'm not sure if moving forward, it's going to be at Ken Edwards. But that's something we, I want to get clarity on. Because I've heard strongly from the community and from some commissioners that they, the in-person is critical. And I think it's good for just getting work done. And it's not, I want to see you guys' faces. I haven't met a number of the commissioners in person yet.
Because I believe there's only two looped facilities in the city. And one is Ken Edwards and the other is City Council Chambers.
Yeah, that's my understanding too. And I don't know if they're thinking about maybe even under the umbrella of the hybrid efforts that there's probably going to have to be some AV infrastructure. And they talked about they have to budget for that, but I don't know if that includes looping or what's under that umbrella. But that's maybe something we can recommend. But yeah, I'd like clarity on where we can possibly have in-person meetings because that's essential. But if anyone in their network, feel free to share the information and get the word out. And hopefully we'll get some more good candidates and hopefully some of the folks who want to stay on for another term and keep doing the work. Or does anyone have any ideas, thoughts or anything they think I should do in this last stretch run before we try and get some more folks on the commission? If you don't have them now, you can send me an email, just any thoughts on how to get the word out. Any, any mailing lists that I haven't thought of or, I don't know, just any ideas I welcome because I, I want to get as many people in this last one as possible. One hail Mary effort. All right, I'm, I'm going to move on to the next item, future agenda planning. I just wanted to open this space just for future ideas for agendas. And just some context is I, we're going to get a feedback, but I'm pretty sure starting July 1, we're back to the, the old rules. July 4th is the first Monday of the month. So the earliest our next meeting will be is July 11th. That's the earliest. And then I hope it'll be the first Monday in August. And then the first in September and first in October. That's the cadence I'm aiming for. And the first meeting that we, I have on the agenda for us to have is that retreat. That's, that's the A1. And I'm hoping we can do that in July or at the latest August date. That's my plan is I like to do it after we have clarity on the new commissioners, who's renewing, who's the new ones, and have that retreat. Get the onboarding, some of the new commissioners never had, get us all on the same page meeting. There's going to be elections and then we'll, we'll go from there. It's really an opportunity to kind of hit the reset button and do things right moving forward.
Will we have a staff, will we have a staff facilitator for the retreat?
I'm hoping, that's what I brought, I hadn't, that's a follow-up for Noe. Ask them when we can have this retreat. And I brought it up with our, with Aleah as well, but we've had that on our agenda as our first new fiscal year meeting for a while. I just hope it's sooner than later. We can get all the pieces together. And then we definitely wanted to have the ADA coordinator come in. That's another speaker we'd like to have. I, after the conversation earlier, I'd like to figure out a speaker around the issues Commissioner Block has brought up and researched. So that's probably communicating with the city and finding the right person to do that. And one, one more thing on my agenda is in October, I'd like to bring back or someone similar to Joe Devon, I believe that was his name. Because there, there's a big update to the web content accessibility guidelines in September. It's going from version 2.1 to 2.2. And I, I want to know from the experts how, how we make this happen in the city because that's, it's the ADA for websites and it'll be final. And then it's going to stay like that for a few years until 3.0 comes out. So I really want to know, how do we get 2.2 in place? And how do we do that and put us in the best position for 3.0 when that comes out? So that, I want to get that in in October. Assuming that it gets approved in September. So either someone like, I really liked the speaker that came last time. He was perfect. Or someone similar, maybe someone from IT in the city and him, a co-presenter. Those are the ideas that I have. Any other ideas or thoughts about future agendas or things you guys really want to have go on?
Well, October is, even though we don't say it is, Disability Awareness Month. I know that Death Awareness Week is the third week of September, something like that. But a lot of people said, oh, Disability Awareness Month doesn't exist anymore. But most of the people that I know in the East still, you know, do something for it. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think that's something that we can bring up at the retreat. And I think that to present a big picture about the state of disabilities and what, how we present ourselves.
Yeah, and we can also, we have relationships with the library that can push stuff out. And we, I think we need to connect with public information and how to get the word out and, and use some more of the city's tools to share important resources. I think our role moving forward to is going to be curating resources and pushing them out virtually. Because there's just so much stuff and a lot of it's junk. And we can really use expertise in this group to curate great stuff and use our city channels to get it out. That's a, we started to build that relationship over the past year and now we need to execute it and take advantage of it. And definitely next to me is something, mental health. Again, I think we can partner with some folks in the city to get the word out a little bit better and share resources. Commissioner Azariah?
Yeah, so July 4th parade is on this year. Anything can be done? Like, I mean, I know that we have a community group and we're making a larger group to attend, but is there any? Like, anything that has been done in the past or can we use this platform to, you know, to create awareness or is there anything that needed to be done? Like, I'm not sure. you know, to create awareness or is there anything that needed to be done? Like, I'm not sure how the commission takes July 4th Parade. Is that just anything to do with me, you know, like bring awareness to the general public about the Disability Commission?
In the past, we have given out people would would go in their electric wheelchairs and we would hand out like what do you call those? Rubber bracelets? That have Santa Monica disability. One year we had the magnets that show where all the accessible things are in the city. Those weren't practical because you can't throw those at people. Unfortunately, we don't have a budget. So, you know, in order to do that and organize it, having a cart, one of the prior commissioners would get like a big golf cart. And we would decorate that and then we would be in part of the parade. I don't know because I never worked on the parade. And I don't know anybody who is still on the commission that has. I know people enjoyed it and it was a good presence. I just, I don't know how we go about it without the materials and and the people who've done it without the budget. We just don't have a budget.
I think that's what you're bringing up. We need to set something back on at the retreat too is, you know, now that we're in the July 1, what's our budget? Because we're here, we're here, we're a commission now. So we need all those official things. And I'm just hearing, I'd like to do more, have a present, have more community events with something we've missed because of COVID, but something I'd like to do. And it requires a budget, but I'm out of town July 4th, so that won't work, but moving forward, there, I do want to have a presence for the commission and more community events. Obviously, if it's safe and if you're comfortable. But I think we should be more in person when it's when it's feasible.
Well, I think, what is it, National Night Out? That's an event, if it happens, we could probably be a presence there. I can't remember when it was held.
Okay, I mean, parade is kind of like outdoor event unless you're meeting outdoors or
That is outdoors.
That is, oh, okay.
The National Night Out. It's something that happens all over the country, sponsored by all the police departments and fire departments, Office of Emergency Management, you know, and they usually have prizes and, you know, all kinds of things to bring people out. But we haven't had one in the last couple of years. And I'm not quite sure who, I think it's the Office of Emergency Management with the police department that put it together. So that's just an outdoor, you know, space for us. But I think we have to wait and see going forward, what what else they're going to put forward. They haven't done coast. I don't know if there's any plans to do that again. And that was, you know, an outdoor event, which we always participated in. And I think we have to see what city council is going to put forward. What was the art show, the art show that we used to do?
Is the city council meetings in person?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, indoors with masks?
Indoors, no mask.
No, mask not required, but most people were wearing.
If you know, the shape of city council, it's, you know, it's pretty, pretty big. I don't think people are, they're in person, sitting there, are they, besides the city council?
Yeah, I was there April 26th.
Okay.
People are in the, in the seats and audience.
Okay.
Sometimes people sitting next to each other. There's like a soccer team there getting an award, so it was pretty busy. And there was an exposure. But most people were wearing masks, from my recollection. I was definitely wearing a K95.
The numbers are going up with the surveillance. Oh, I don't, hopefully outdoors is the better idea. Indoors with some space would be good.
Totally. We probably, they say we will probably will have an indoor mask mandate by the end of the month.
Yeah, it's probably coming back.
That's what they say, but we'll see.
Actually, this is reminding me too. I started working on it a little bit, but just archiving every time the Disabilities Commission has been mentioned in like the Santa Monica Daily Press or something. Just like every time we're we're mentioned in the Santa, in, in the web or in the paper and just having like an archive of all the times the Disability Commission's been mentioned. So we don't have that issue again where city council doesn't remember all the great work we've done. I just did some Google searches and I found like probably 20 articles or some, so just putting that like in a Word document with like the title and the link. And maybe a sentence or two or something. I'll try and work on and maybe add by the retreat or but I think that's something we should just keep running. Every time we're mentioned, add it to this paper. So then you know, when we come up again, we'll have this ledger of all the great stuff we've done. And then when new commissioners, they they can learn from those existing examples. So we don't recreate bad history and we learn from what already happened.
If you would contact me when you're working on that, because I've recently come up with some of the papers on the flyers for like the art show we did in the library that we had people who suffered from forms of mental illness who submitted art and we did an art exhibit. TV was there, Sue Hemmerich was there. You know, we did the animals, you know, animals helping people with all different kinds of service and therapy animals and, you know, Santa Monica PD, what's his name, Rambo, the canine dog. And we had Santa Monica Animal Shelter there with puppies and it was, it was a really nice event. So I have, you know, I have various examples of things like that we did.
Yeah, I think we should archive it all.
Yes.
It's just maybe we scan it and and add it or we'll figure it out, but just getting it on paper and organized in bullet points and then as screenshots or whatever, having, and then having it in one place, I think will serve the commission moving forward.
Right.
And maybe this agenda thing too is, this is an item we should have early next year as well or during the retreat. But did I miss anything or any commissioners have a burning item they, or any comments you want to add to this agenda item? All right, I'm going to go to our last item, Public Input. Public input is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. State law prohibits the body from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. Are there any members of the public?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Daniel Roman? Daniel Roman, are you a member of the public that has a comment? Going once.
Hi, I don't have a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, before we get adjourned, I just want to thank everybody for being here and sticking with this. This has been quite a tough year, just there's been a lot of hiccups, but we're here, we're we're a commission. We've pioneered how to do a hybrid meeting. We what we've done here has been influential on city council. We were the first one to do this. They mentioned that other commissions that did this, but it was us, we're the pioneers. And just, you know, next year's going to be better. I'm just hopeful. I think we we did a lot of stuff to build a foundation to move forward. We're standalone. We know how to do a hybrid meeting. We have no A, we have a staff person. We're going to get clarity around some of that, the the budget and and getting folks on boarded and comfortable in their role as a commissioner. We kind of just jumped in the deep end and have been winging it, but we're going to get back on track next year. And just thanks for for sticking through it and and taking your time to be with us and be part of this mission. So just want to thank you guys again. And I want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
And can I get Commissioner Azariah? I'm doing a roll call vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Block?
Yes.
Commissioner Kesmeh Dodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Henner?
Yes.
All right, everyone else is gone, so we are adjourned and again, we'll at the latest have our next meeting, the first week of August. So that's August. That would be August first, I believe, is the earliest we'll have a meeting, a regular meeting. And I'll be, I'll reach out to you. I'm trying to get that retreat as soon as possible.
Can I still ask a question?
Sure.
I said, journalizing. I don't know if it's even this year, but there's a summit of there's a summit that starts in LA. Summit of the America that starts in LA tomorrow. I was just wondering if the city representatives are going there, like the president is coming, and I was just wondering if the city gets like to participate and they go in the summit as a city representative? I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm just asking. I don't know if that would happen in LA. This is the first time I've seen.
I think it's all just heads of state.
Heads of state, okay.
Countries, I don't think it's.
And in things with cities, okay.
No, I think, I think Mayor Garcetti will be there, but I think Kamala Harris is actually the one who is spearheading it here, what I saw in the